Good afternoon. Welcome to the Town of Fort Mill's Monday, July 8th meeting. If you have a cellphone on you, would you please silence it so that we can give you our full attention and you give us yours? We will stand and have a pledge of allegiance in our invocation. You're welcome to join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Huntley?
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, as we gather here as a council representing our town, we pray that you would give us the wisdom and courage to do what is right. We give thanks for the blessings you have bestowed upon us, the blessings of liberty, the blessings of family, state, and country. We pray that you would be each of us as we return home after this meeting and return safely. In thy holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Council members, you have been provided the minutes from the June 24th council meeting. Do you have any changes, additions, or deletions? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Have they been approved?
I have a move for approval on a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. Public comment. Pursuant to section 246 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any resident may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comment sheet prior to the start of the meeting. Do we have anyone signed in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Where are you, Al? Al, we should know your address by heart, but you know the routine. If you would, please give your name and state your address.
Al, we're at 1006 Crest Haven Lane in Fort Mill.
Thank you.
I didn't even bring notes.
Al, you're letting me down.
But I bring you an update from last month.
Mm-hmm.
It is now, last month was six months with an intermittent boiler at the complex.
Mm-hmm.
It is now seven months with an intermittent boiler for the pool.
Mm-hmm.
And four weeks of no hot water because they started replacing the boiler four weeks ago. I don't know. I'm 74 years old. I have never in my life seen any business function function so poorly to take over six months to figure out what to do, over a month to replace a boiler, plumbing issues, electrical issues. Come on. If you're going to do the job, plan it out, figure it out, and do it. This is nonsense. This morning at nine, they weren't done putting in the boiler. And who knows when? It's just crazy. And I don't understand how it can be so mismanaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. We appreciate your comments. We have no further folks signed up for our public comments, so we'll move to our first item, which is presentation number one, Employee of the Quarter. Davy Broom will handle that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call up Chuck Cook. Please.
Come on over.
All the way up.
Yep, all the way up here where we can all see you.
We don't bite. We don't bite.
No.
Mayor of the council, y'all know him. This is a routine annual or a quarterly function we do now, present Employee of the Quarter. Again, we take requests or nominations for Employee of the Quarter. We have a committee that actually reviews nominations and then makes, they will vote upon those nominations for Employee of the Quarter. And for this quarter, I'm just going to tell you, Chuck Cook, he is an employee in our Public Works Department as a mechanic. He's been with us for, since May of 2015. He's been a model employee for the last four years. But I'd like to read the nomination information, what the nomination was for Chuck. It says Chuck Cook has taken upon himself to conduct and coordinate the weekly safety meetings for Public Works. Chuck has also formed a safety committee with other Public Works employees. This committee meets every few weeks and they discuss safety topics and put safety procedures in place. Chuck is always willing to lend a helping hand, and he takes a lot of pride in everything he does with a smile on his face. I am here to say that Chuck is not only a quality employee, he's a quality individual. And I don't toot my horn very often, but I previously hired Chuck. I'll give the side note, he's a great job for the town, and I couldn't be more proud of him and our Public Works Department, so congratulations.
Awesome. Chuck from the council, we thank you. Thank you so much for a wonderful, thank you. We're lucky to have you. Don't sit near the window. Those of you that are near the window, you might want to move forward. That was pretty large. If you'd like to move forward, we'll get somebody to move a chair for you. You want two? Yeah, move you up one. I think that's a good idea. I don't like thunderstorms. Thank you, ma'am. Alrighty. Presentation number two, another happy subject. Update on Fire Station Number Two, and our very own Chipper Wilkerson will be providing an update.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Been a few weeks since we had groundbreaking. I just wanted to give you an update on where we were and what you should see coming here in the very near future.
Thank you.
Some of the pictures you're going to see was work before the groundbreaking, but I wanted to give you representation from there to now. We are currently on budget and staying on time.
Woo-hoo.
We're going to knock on both.
That's doubly good.
Yes. So, the first pictures here are for some of the forced main that had to be relocated on the sewer line that was there. It had to be moved up and over. Not really glamorous shots, but kind of gives you a little bit of work. This was the beginning stages of the hill that was taken down off the Fort Mill bypass. Some of the work in the backside of the site, getting some of the retention pond and stormwater process that had to be done first before...
Trudy Ben.
Before any, anything else could be done, we had to get the stormwater taken care of, just like any other project in town. And then this is the sort of ending part of the first part of the stormwater. More of that will be coming as the building gets some, going up, some things out front will have to be done here in the very near future. This is from the backside of the property looking towards the roadway, Fort Mill Parkway. So, just a lot of dirt being moved, and they moved a lot of dirt fast and made that happen really quickly. And a lot of these pictures, Chief Griffin's kind of standing over there, I've noticed that, and I'm catching him in a lot of the pictures.
We'll use them in the future.
So, just some more site prep. The one on the left is getting more of the pad ready down to grade, and then the right-hand side is the beginning stages of the retaining wall that holds the sewer forced main in place. That would be the footings going in on the right and being poured, and then the walls going vertical on that on the, on the right as well. Some of the footings for the building, and then you can see in the back corner, the actual first part of the wall that is up and uncovered, and the second half is being poured at that That gives you a little idea of what's behind that wall. A lot of dirt came out, and that retaining wall looks kind of like an L. There's a lot of concrete behind it and under the ground to help kind of, to add the weight to keep the wall up. And all of that dirt has now been packed back in there, and it is, it is good to go. So, you're starting to see, the footings are in, some of the walls for the foundation that come up, and then the pad being ready to be poured. That gives you a better view of all the way around. And our lovely Tony McMahon has been going out taking a few shots here and there with his drone, and hopefully he'll be out pretty soon again to take some more as they've progressed along. But that gives you a good idea of the, the outlay of the building. The yellow part is the living quarters and office space. That now, that is a picture of the vapor barrier down, and then the right-hand side will be the engine bay, and you won't see that poured for a while to come because it's a different finish, and they want to preserve that finish without having anything happen to it. Some starting of the, the pouring of the, the living quarters and the pad. And then as they finish that up, and that is its current state as of Friday. I did not get out to the site today, so I don't know if they've started to go vertical with the walls, but they're, they've already put the things in place for the brick veneer on the front side once the, the block go up as well. And that's a picture from the top of the retaining wall, kind of give you a little better shot of it. Any questions?
I love your attention to detail and your ability to bring that to us so that we are kept up to speed. I greatly appreciate the management that's allowing this to be ahead of schedule or on schedule and on budget. Those coming from a construction background, those are music instead of words.
We have monthly meetings with our design team who's helping oversee the, the construction part, and I'll tell you, the, the construction manager's a pit bull. He's, he's on top of things and catching things. Between him and myself and Chief Griffin looking over things, it's, it's working out good so far.
That's wonderful. I think it's important for everyone that will be watching this going forward. Again, stormwater, the state began to require several years ago that we do work to help better manage the stormwater runoff from all facilities, and everyone sees a charge for that. That's what that money goes towards, the engineering, design, maintenance. Our friend Greg in the back does a, a great job in making sure that we do it properly, and it's for all of us. The land that this particular fire station is being located on was donated. I think that's a really good example of good negotiations. And the impact fees that we charge that we can take into account and help pay for the facility to provide the services for our community. All good stories.
Yes.
Just as a reminder, you said we're on time for it, but when are we expecting to physically move into it?
Around February of next year. It's a one-year project.
2020?
2020. Yes, ma'am.
The years are slipping by so fast. Any questions for Chipper? Chipper, thank you so much. Do such quality work. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Presentation number three, upcoming town events. Chris Sardelli, welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Good evening, council and mayor. I think this is my first time presenting to all of you, but I hope you're all doing well. Our events coordinator, Caroline Hasty, is on vacation, a much-earned vacation this week, so I'm filling in, giving you a little quick recap of how the July 3rd celebration went, and then just a quick preview of our next four summer events. And if there are any questions, feel free to ask. If I don't have the specifics in front of me, I'll make sure I check with Caroline when she gets back, will get you some details. But had a chance to talk to Caroline before she left and just find out how the event went, and by all accounts, it was very well received, it went very well. Caroline herself said this was one for the record books, and she was just pleased with the attendance and with the vendors. She's talked with a lot of the vendors, and they all had good things to say. They were very happy to be part of the event. Same with the merchants who are on Main Street. She didn't talk to everyone, but the ones she had spoken to had a very good night. One of the biggest successes she relayed to me was Olive's on Main Street. They said they originally weren't going to stay open that night, but decided to stay open, and they ended up doing as well on that one night as they would have in all of June. So, they did very well that night.
That's great.
Yeah, it was one really good success story. So, I don't know the details for every merchant, but she's spoken to a couple since then. They said they had a good night. So, I also had a chance to speak with several of the department heads who are part of the Events Committee, and all of them said every aspect they were involved with went very well. I talked with the fire chief. He estimates about 3,000 or more attendees, which was pretty good for our inaugural event, not knowing how many people were going to be coming to an event this, you know, laid out this way. From the police department, they said that parking, the detours, the crowd, there were no reported issues. So, that went very, very well. So, just wanted to report that. We also just wanted to say thanks to the Fort Hill, Fort Mill History Museum for helping us host that VIP gathering in the Srat Building as well. And we're already planning for next year. So, I know we're already looking at locking in that pyrotechnic company again. That fireworks show is very well received, so we want to try and replicate it again if we can.
I would like to make comment. I would have held this until the end when we do our roundtable, but I think this is a perfect opportunity. I have gotten so many wonderful emails from people that grew up when I did, and we used to have fireworks over the golf course for the Fourth of July. We haven't had that in many, many years. And the emails that I've received were wonderful. The, the language being used in them was exceptional, that it was what a small-town celebration should be, it's what they remember. Downtown looked beautiful. I can't thank staff and employees enough because this went off as one of the better events, and I'm so happy that all the employees were able to enjoy their July the Fourth as a true holiday for themselves. I think with the temperatures, the nighttime event certainly poses a little bit better opportunity for enjoyment. The cannon firing went off, although I was a little nervous.
First time in four years, somebody else has loaded it.
Yeah. But what, even, even from Mike Short that has done our cannon, we had such great compliments for this particular event, and I'm very grateful for all of the work that you guys did to pull it off well.
That's great. I'll make sure we relay that to the Events Committee as well. There was a lot of hard work on all parts, so, thank you. We're glad it, it went well, and we'll keep you updated as you make plans for next year.
And I wouldn't mind, because we've not publicly done it, and one of our sessions acknowledged who our cannoneers were. We talked about it was because of their service and their tenure with the town. I've got a list, or Davy, you can do it either way. Chris?
You have a list, get right ahead.
All right. So, Cindy Smith, Mullenax, Shontae Bowler, Jeff Helms, Robbie Hill, and Robert Friday. Yeah, the fact that they came out, come to work every day and have been doing this for so many years and been so loyal to us, it's amazing at this day and age. But then to be able to honor them and have them there with us that night was pretty cool and touching, so.
Definitely.
The other thing I would like to ask of it is, we had such a wonderful presentation of the why we fire the cannons and what's special about it. I don't know if we can get that documented somehow. I'm sure maybe the history museum has it to some, but I think it would be something cool to put on our Facebook page because not everybody could hear the story, but it was really neat hearing some of the history I had never even heard before. So, if there's a way...
He did a great job.
Yeah, he did, he did a fabulous job of it. So, I love the...
Charlie took a great photo of the cannon with the fire cut, so we could tie that to that story, too.
And maybe Tony's got it on video. Tony does everything great for us on videography and photography, but just some really given tribute to the cannon firing since we are special. One thing I learned, longest-running firing cannon in the U.S.
Yep.
That's great. Definitely. We'll, we'll look into that and see how we can record it.
You were very young when we used to blow the windows out of Fort Mill.
I remember. I have seen it before. I have been here before.
Right there on Main Street.
And I will say, I liked moving the food trucks off of Main Street. Number one, Main Street gets so crowded with these events anyway, but what I noticed, we had dinner at Town Tavern, and they were able to extend their storefront. So, they put a tent out front and had a few extra tables so that people that came in and eating, you know, could bring it out front and eat out front. So, to be able to extend their storefront was a really neat way to do it.
They were very excited. I had a chance to speak with them as they were setting up the tent, and they said, "Well, let's go ahead while we have the space and do double tents and tables," and I think it, it went well for them, so that's good.
Perfect.
Thank you to everybody.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. Well, I'll just give you a quick overview of the next four events, just to give you a quick preview. Our next summer concert in the series is this Friday night, July 12th, at Veterans Park. The venue opens at 6:00, and we'll have five food trucks, and they're going to be serving a variety of foods. It's going to include hot dogs and chicken tenders and barbecue. The band is the Extraordinaire, they're a beach band. They play R&B music, they play some popular music, but very popular. They start at 7:00, and the Fort Mill High School Band will be selling raffle tickets as a fundraiser during the event. So, that'll be this week. Next week, we have our Movies in the Park, hoping it doesn't rain. We rained out of the last one, but this one will be, it's a family-friendly event, so they're going to be showing Marmaduke, the movie, on July 19th, which is a Friday, in Veterans Park, and usually starts around dusk, so around 8:30 is when they're expecting to start, and there'll be concessions for people to buy at the event. And then our final summer concert series is Saturday, August 3rd on Main Street. So, we're switching the venue again for the last concert. That'll be an 80s cover band that play 80s music. They're called Cassette Rewind. That begins at 7:00 as well. There will also be something different this year. There's a hot pepper eating contest that will be hosted by Pucker Butt. So, they're still working on all the details for that, but they're bringing in professional pepper eaters to do a series around of eating the hottest peppers and see who would. So, that'll be part of the event as well. Be separate stages as far as I, I know, but we'll let you know more as that comes out. And then we are, we rescheduled our movie that was canceled about a month ago. That's Ice Age Collision Course, another family movie. That'll be on Friday, August 9th, assuming it doesn't rain. So, just cross your fingers. And that'll also be in Veterans Park around dusk. So, and that's all.
I have to say, we also had great compliments about the last concert in the park. That went exceedingly well, just very nicely.
That crowd was, was very well attended.
If there's any luck with anything, it won't be long before we have our amphitheater up, and we'll have even more fun to share.
Definitely.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
It's great having you with us.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We will now move to Old Business Item Number One, Second Reading and Public Hearing, An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance for the Town of Fort Mill, Article II, Requirements by District, Section 24, COD/COD-N, Corridor Overlay District so as to amend the design standards for the district and to provide for other matters relating thereto. We will move into the public hearing now. Not seeing or hearing? You have something? Come to the podium, please. State your name and address, please.
My name is Brett McNabb. I am a resident at 1201 Arges River Drive, Fort Mill, South Carolina. I just wanted to share with you guys that I attended the Planning Commission meeting where this was discussed in detail. I thought the conversation was very constructive, and the Planning Commission certainly had the best interest of the town and the integrity of the overlay district in mind when they recommended denial of the amendment. I would hope that you give significant weight to their recommendation and also that you follow their guidance. So, that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else that would like to make comment? Hearing none, we're going to close the public comment period. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, accept Old Business Item Number One.
I have a motion. And I have a second. Do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you very much. New Business Item Number One, Approval... Put my glasses on. Approval to enter into a contractual agreement with the York County for the purpose of utilizing the York County Material Recovery Facility. Our expert on this issue will be Davy Broom. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, accept New Business Item Number One.
I have a motion to accept and a second. Davy, would you like to provide any information to us?
Yes, ma'am. York County has a new material recovery facility. It is state-of-the-art, and it's large enough that can handle some of the municipalities in the county. In years past, they've had a different operation, and they, they basically keep up with their, their convenience center recycle recovery throughout the county, but municipalities kind of overloaded their system. But with this new facility, we reached out to them and asked if we could join them, and they, they have allowed us to do that under, under contract. So, tonight, I'm asking for approval to begin the contract or contract discussion with the county to start taking our recyclable material to their facility.
Do you have any questions, council members?
Would we be committing, excuse me, committing to any dollars at this point, or is it just to really start the negotiation with them?
Yes, actually, they, York County Council has set the price, the tipping fees, at $35 per ton.
Okay.
So, we would be paying that to take our material there, but that is less than half. Actually, we pay more than twice that now, so it would be saving some money, and it would allow us to not raise rates in the immediate future.
And what type of marketing or advertising would we do to let our constituents know about the service and, you know, just remind them of what's available?
That's a very good question. We will, we will use every avenue from our billing statements to our media, like Facebook, website, and we're actually going to have stickers made up and placed on each roll cart explaining what is accepted and what's not accepted. So, we anticipate at least a 30-day window of education to our residents before we start the program, but we want to get as much information out to everyone as possible.
And we're going to retain our existing carts?
We will. We're using the same carts. Only, nothing's really changing, except, you know, York County will not accept glass as a co-mingled product. So, that's the biggest change, and that's the education piece that we'll have to add to this, is what do you do with your glass? For those watching tonight, you know, the, York County has two convenience centers. They operate in Fort Mill, one on the Fort Mill bypass at Hennessy Road, one at Baxter, in front of Baxter, and they both accept glass there, so you can still recycle glass, but you would just need to take it to their facility.
What about plastic bags? Grocery bags and so forth? I know a lot of times they get put in there.
They do. That, that's not accepted, and that's one of the no-no's on their, on their material, educational material they provided us. So, we'll make sure we get all of that out as we'll make everyone as, as prepared as possible before we start taking the material to their facility.
I do think it's important to point out, on a more global scale, particularly in the country, there are many changes occurring with recycling. And as those changes occur, it actually trickles down to the contracts and the services that we're able to provide. There are countries now that are no longer accepting the materials that we once were recycling, so it has caused a ripple effect, if you will, in the program for recycling, and we're doing the best we can to keep the costs down, still do what's right, and engage with companies that continue to do the majority of the recycling products that we've grown accustomed to recycle. Fair enough.
That's correct. Very good.
And you said that we would keep the, the carts for the recycling to go in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, is it the same vendor that will transport?
Yes, ma'am. We're still, we're contracted with Waste Pro USA to collect our recycling for us. The county is just now allowing them to bring Fort Mill product only to their facility.
And if something's, if it goes in there that shouldn't, how would that be? I know we're going to do this education to the...
They allowing us a certain percentage...
A grace period, I imagine.
York County inspects each load.
Right.
And they accept up to a certain percentage of that load as what they consider dirty material or unrecycled material.
Contaminated material.
Right, contaminated. So, if you go above and beyond that percentage, they, they will charge us for that. So, it's, it's important that we get the education...
And charge you about a ton? Is that how it is? Okay.
I don't know if you've been out to that facility. I know you have, but many folks have not. I do think and have discussed with some of the county council members the need for us to do some discovery into an incinerator that we all work together to use, because I hate seeing huge parcels of land filled. So, I think we are having some interesting discussions along those lines. Technology has improved greatly. All right, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Do we have any additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Thank you. Committee report. We have a committee report with recommendations from the ad hoc committee for one historic review board seat and two accommodation tax advisory committee seats. Mr. Huntley, you're at the helm of that committee.
Yes. We had one opening on the historic review board, and we are recommending Sarah Shaw as replacement. We had two on the, two openings on the accommodation tax advisory committee, and all these openings are because the person that was there left their employment so that they would not be representing. And for hospitality tax, there are two seats, a hospitality seat and a cultural seat. And we recommend for the hospitality seat Courtney Thompson, who's with Southern Sugar. And the cultural seat, we recommend Christina Humburg with the Fort Mill History Museum.
Do we need to vote on those as a council? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the...
I'll recuse myself from this particular vote. Go ahead.
Make a motion to accept the presented nominees.
I have a second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Thank you for the work of that committee and for all that provide their names to be included in the opportunity to serve in a volunteer capacity. If you didn't get selected this time, please don't go away. Those openings occur. We do try to honor the people that have spent time on those committees and allow them that movement and educational opportunity to move from committee to committee. So by all means, if you volunteer and you don't get selected this time, we'll get you next time for sure. So thank you so much. With that, we have no further items on our agenda. Larry, do you have anything for the good of the whole?
Yes, I'd like to second the comments made about our July 3rd. That was the best fireworks I have personally ever seen. And Caroline Hasty blessed a little heart. I was afraid she was going to have a heart attack. She was running around like a chicken with her head cut off, but she really kept that thing going right and doing an excellent job. And also our employees and of the ones that were the guest cannoneers, or whatever you want to call them. I think Robert Duck was the one most honored.
All righty. Mr. Shary?
Again, Fourth of July was, you want to watch a bunch of adults turn, instantly turn into kids, put on a fireworks show like that? And I just kind of looked around the crowd, and everybody's smiling and looking with awe. Those guys did a great job, and I'm not above raising that budget for next year. If they put on a show like that with what they had, then if we throw a couple more dollars in their direction, I'm sure it would be phenomenal. Tony had some great photos. I was kind of combing through his website the other day, and right when the cannon was shooting fire and the crowd, and just great candid shots of our town and the great people that live in it. And I'm looking forward, next week, we're going to be in Greenville for the MASC meeting. That's going to be good, get to learn a lot of stuff, and hopefully bring it back to the town and help the town out. And thanks to the staff for everything going well.
Thank you.
I'd like to make one additional comment.
Now, we already passed your turn. I'm kidding.
When the lady that sang the National Anthem, her mother was right in front of me.
Oh, she was funny.
And she was filming her. And that mother looked like she was so proud, she just could not stand. And it was just a warming feeling. It was, that was nice. That was really nice.
That is wonderful. I was just teasing you. Jamie, are you finished? Lisa?
So we often go around the table and acknowledge so many of the employees in the different departments here that do a fabulous job, but the one that we don't mention very often, although I've heard his name a few times tonight, is Tony Mackmahon. And Tony is there at every event, taking awesome photography, doing the videos for us so that all the people out there can sit and watch us while you do that, I don't know. But, so you can watch these, but Tony, thank you. I know you hear us and you see us, but thank you for all that you do for the town for many, many years.
I second that. Tony's the guy behind the curtain at all of our meetings that does the videotaping of our meetings, and he does an excellent job capturing the essence of Fort Mill, if you will. He seems to be at the right place at the right time all the time. So Tony and I grew up together, or rather, he grew up. Yeah, Tony's a great guy, so we're very fortunate to have him. I would like to say, too, that on a night like tonight, when we have an agenda that's filled with very positive things, we have very positive things in our community every day, every single day. There's something good to be recognized in this community. Our staff for the town is relentless in making sure that they do the very best level of work that they can. I come by here, and they're here after hours, they're here before hours, they're here on holidays. They give of themselves very, very much of the time. Our community, you know, the community turned out for the event. I'm so pleased with our downtown area being a gathering place again. When I grew up, that's what it was. That's where you went, and that's what it was. And guess what? It's that again. That takes a lot of combined effort from people that are willing to invest in downtown, that are willing to put their money and their lives and their livelihood on Main Street, and then to open the doors to offer that to all of us. I'm just so very pleased to live in a community like this. Thank you all for what you do to make Fort Mill the best place to live. Ronnie?
I reiterate, the July 3rd, it was a great venue, a lot of people. And going back to recycling, I'm old enough, and I read this article, I'm old enough to remember when we stopped using paper as our product for grocery bags because we were killing all the trees.
You saw that on Facebook.
And plastic was to fix. Now we're trying to figure out what to do with the plastic.
Yep, go back to paper.
Everybody's going back to paper.
And cloth.
Killing the trees, so.
That's a good point, Ronnie.
Good job, Ron.
Chris?
My turn? Okay. Now, July 3rd was a nerve-wracking evening for me, because about three weeks before, the guy that's loaded or created the rounds for the cannon had back surgery. So he said, I need you to come over to my house and create the rounds that are going to shoot this cannon on July 4th. And so, yeah, yeah. So I had my iPhone out, and, because he's the only one that knows how to do this, and he said, you know, if I get hit by a bus, no one's going to know how to load this cannon and how to create the rounds. So I told my wife, I said, I'll be over, I'll be gone about 30 or 45 minutes. Because three and a half hours later, I'm still there, and my phone, she's like, what is going on? So he did the first one, and then he said, all right. I said, all right, I got to run. He said, no, you're not. You're going to load, you're going to make the second one. So the second one was in the cannon facing the railroad tracks. So I knew which one Mike had made and which one I had made. And so his advice to me was, say, he had a long wooden rod, and you load it this way, but don't grip it, because if it goes off, you will lose your hands. You said, you hold it like this and drop it if by chance there's static electricity, because all it takes is a spark. And so Mike's goes off, just, you know, just, no problem. And so I knew Shante was going to shoot the second one, and I was like, oh man, this thing goes off. Because Mike had back surgery, so he was down there, but he was kind of hollering around. But it went off, thankfully.
With a bang.
Yeah, with a bang, but I was holding my breath there for a little bit. But we all need to remember, you know, freedom isn't free. There are a lot of people that have died for this country, and I'm proud of our flag. I am. That flag right there, my grandfather fought all through the Pacific during World War II, and my dad and my uncle were on Kitty Hawk in Vietnam and off the coast during that war. And I can remember my dad said that in 1968, I know I've told this story before, but he said he was watching the sunset off of that aircraft carrier, and he's, you know, eight, nine, 10,000 miles away from home. And he said, son, if I'd have known, I could have jumped off the edge and swam back, I would have done it. But just, you know, think of all the people that have died for our country. And doing some family research, I found there was a guy in my family called Milton Wiggins. He died, and he was 19 years old in World War II in Holland. And I reconnect with his family after I moved to this area about 20 years ago, and they have his flag draped on his casket in World War II, and that was just, just a surreal feeling to see that thing. And, you know, just to think about all the people that have died for our freedom, so we can go shoot fireworks on Main Street, and so we can sit here and govern this town and have all the freedoms that we have. So we all need to remember it, and that freedom has never been free. There's always been a price.
Trudy?
Well, there's not too much I can add to what everybody else has already said. But it was a very nice event, and I was very pleased, like the mayor said, that everyone came out, and it was like when we used, when we were growing up here. Downtown is back to being very vibrant, have people up and down the streets. And I'll have to, my husband said the same thing that Larry said. He said that he saw some fireworks that he had never seen before, and I took a few minutes to figure out what he was talking about, but apparently there were some different shapes or something, but he...
He came up with something new every year.
There was something new every year. And he said the same thing that Larry did, that it was very unusual, so, but thank you to all of you for your hard work. We appreciate it as council.
All righty. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.